Can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.c i dot galt dot c a dot u s. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Liz. Uh, council, do we have any agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
I'd like to call E five, please.
E five? Okay, thank you. Could you read the public comment now, please?
Under government code section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. And I just have one speaker sheet under a certain topic. I have no other speaker sheet.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the information and consent calendar. Councilmember Cruz, E five, the approval of California Environmental Quality Act sequel. Now, this is of exemption and construction agreement for the two thousand and thirteen well rehabilitation project.
Thank you. Uh, well, initially, when I saw this, I was, I got very irritated, and Jason can attest to that. Uh, we just recently spent a large sum of money to put in a brand-new well out of Golden Heights, and I thought it was rather inappropriate to put any further money towards it since it should be quote-unquote still under a warranty. And then I was informed that it is actually the old well being rehabilitated. Is that correct, Mr. Wayne Clark?
That's correct.
Could you enlighten a little for me?
Yes, um, this project is to rehabilitate three of the city's existing eight wells, and, um, we have a number of wells that are more than twenty years old, and, uh, in the case of the, um, bear with me while I catch up with this here, uh, in the case of the Golden Heights well, um, it is noted to have been rehabilitated in two thousand and seven, so it hasn't been that long, it's been about six years. Uh, but we are experiencing some, um, downhole vibration, which is an indication of either a bearing or possibly a pump or a motor. And so we've taken it offline and are recommending that this project pull that well, take a look, find out, is it a motor problem, a bearing problem, and then take appropriate corrective actions.
Okay. And the pump that you had listed on here for the Virginia jug area, the, uh, the one just south of Community Park, which one specifically are we talking about? The new one that was just built out there, the one?
Uh, it's what we refer to as Well eighteen. You should have a vicinity map in your package.
I didn't see that.
If we did our job correctly after the budget change form. And, um, it is a well that was constructed in two thousand and two and has never been rehabilitated, so we're at the top ten year mark where it doesn't hurt to pull it. In this case, we're, again, noticing vibration. Uh, we're working on a sort of a proactive, um, not wait till something runs to failure, but we're, we're doing preventive checks, and we're now checking for vibration, other symptoms of early damage, so that we can maybe catch something in the early stages and do a minor repair rather than waiting until it tears itself apart, and then we're gonna do a well and a pump and column. Um, so we'll basically do the same procedure there, pull the pump and column, inspect the motor, the pump, the column, the bearings, and, uh, then fix whatever is causing the problem.
And of the three, the one on Crystal is the most severe, if I really understand it?
Uh, yeah, Crystal, in addition to having vibration indications of problems, has also had a severe drop-off in its amount of water pumped, and that can either be related to the same symptoms that are causing the vibration, for instance, the pump may have separated from the motor and it's sort of pumping water in circles, and that's why it's not producing. We may find that the, the well screens are encrusted and water's not entering the well, in which case we would, um, you may have noticed, we've recommended a much larger-than-usual contingency amount, so that once we inspect these wells, we can immediately act, uh, to take further action as may be needed, and we won't really know until we open them up and take a look.
Okay. Do we have a timeline on this? The only reason why I'm hammering this, because we're looking like we're gonna have a very dry, dry summer, and I wanna make sure that we have water for our citizens.
Well, we appreciate that, and again, these are three of our eight active wells, so that's a, a large percentage. Uh, we are, um, charging forward now, uh, and recommending that you authorize the larger contingencies so we can expedite repairs. Our goal is to have these completed and online, all three of them, before May, which would start to be our, our summer demand season, so.
Standing. Thank you. Move the item.
Okay, okay. Uh, would you read the items?
Adopt a resolution to, number one, authorize the filing of a sequent notice of exemption; number two, authorize execution of construction agreement for the two thousand and thirteen well rehabilitation project with the amount of one hundred sixty-seven thousand seventy-nine dollars; number three, appropriate and additional one hundred thousand dollars from Water Fund zero zero five fund balance to CIT fifty-eight H to allow contract work; number four, authorize a contingency of sixty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars; number four, authorize the city manager to execute contract change orders within the approved contingency amount; and number five, authorize the public works director to file a notice of completion upon satisfactory completion of the product, project.
Thank you. Motion was made by councilmember Cruz. Do I have a second, please?
One second.
Okay, by councilmember Payne. I'm gonna call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Liz, would you please read the other four for us?
Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of December seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, uh, with the amendment, with the additional page that was replaced, page two, authorize a word of a contract to Clay Bar Engineering for Design and Engineering Services for the Corillian Boulevard Semerhorn Road Water Main Improvement. Number four, ordinance amending chapter fifteen point zero four of the Galt municipal code relating to building and construction and adopting the two thousand and thirteen edition of the California Building Standard Codes.
Do I have a motion?
It's a move, so.
Second?
Yes, the treasurer's report for November two thousand and thirteen, I'm sorry.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the most, was it?
It's a move, somebody's second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Singleton and Councilmember Campion. Okay, call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay. Subject, uh, subject, the public hearing on use of citizens' options for public safety program supplemental law enforcement service fund, COPS plus. And that is to you, chief.
Looks like my mic's off. Okay. Um, Assembly Bill three, two, two, nine was passed in nineteen ninety-six, which imposed the state tax, use tax, uh, to be used for law enforcement agencies as a supplemental, um, funding source. The bill required that the city council appropriate existing and anticipated money exclusively for frontline law enforcement work. The amount that the city received is determined basically by the population, and it's estimated that City of Galt will receive in this year's budget, the same as last year, which is a hundred thousand dollars. That money we are suggesting and recommending that, in fact, is to pay for the funding for the portion of one existing law enforcement officer. Uh, that money itself will be directed to one of the officers who have been on the force currently, and we're asking that the council open up a public hearing to take testimony as far as the COPS supplemental law enforcement funds and our recommendation regarding what we wanna use a hundred thousand dollars for. Uh, take the testimony regarding its use, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution which is attached and available for any questions you might have regarding this.
Thank you. I'm gonna, council, I'm gonna open up the public hearing first, and then we'll get back to you afterwards. So I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, and I'm gonna close the public hearing. And council?
In the staff report, um, it indicates that there's a hundred thousand budgeted for this fiscal year. Um, is that being used for staffing, or what purpose is that being used for?
Uh, the staffing that we had for the year coming up, we're hoping to buy some equipment over that. And we haven't received that money yet, uh, so are you, so that might be?
So what was budgeted in the current fiscal budget has not been expended yet?
The last hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, that has been expended.
In the current fiscal year?
Current fiscal year.
That's what, that's what this a hundred thousand is for. It's for the, the officer position. So we've spent a portion of it because we've gone through half of the year.
Okay. But I'm just reading this report, says the current year budget includes a hundred thousand. That is this?
That is this hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought it was a rollover from last year's.
No, no.
Okay. Okay, let me clarify.
And the other hundred thousand will be coming probably in September and the end of next, uh, this current year.
Okay.
And we will appropriate that, those monies at that time, then?
Yes. Each time the funding is provided to the department, it has to come back to the city council to appropriate, uh, the money that's given to them.
Yeah, typically, the way we do it is we first discuss it as part of the budget process. So this spring, we'll talk about the use of the funds, get the council to approve the use, um, for the budget, and then we have to follow it up. Once we get confirmation that the funding's available from the state, they come back to you doing this public hearing, usually December, January of that fiscal year is the process.
Um, where are we on the staffing levels in general for officers?
We're currently three down.
Three down?
Um, and, well, three down is officers and one sergeant.
Okay. Where in the recruitment process are we?
We are in the recruitment process. We had two that were in the background. One took the job with Lodi Police Department. Uh, they were a little bit faster than we were. We have another person that should be done with his background process. Uh, I was told by the end of the week, and tomorrow we have oral interviews again for, uh, possible candidates for a police officer.
Good. Thanks.
Council, anyone else? Okay, Liz, could you please read the recommended action, please?
Open a public hearing regarding the proposed use of the COPS supplemental law enforcement services funding. Number two, take public testimony regarding the proposed use. Number three, close the public hearing, and number four, adopt the resolution.
Do I have a motion?
Move to, uh, approve the recommend, recommendations.
Okay. Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Sorry. My mic goes off, apologize.
Okay. Um, councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Now, we're at the Community Development Department, the Housing Related Parks, HRP Grant Program. Chris?
Uh, good evening. My name is Chris Arias, Senior Planner with the City's Community Development Department. The item you have before you is the Housing Related Parks for HRP Grant Program. The HRP program provides grant money for parks. It was started by HCD as an incentive and reward to jurisdictions for building affordable housing. The grant is non-competitive. In order to qualify for a grant, cities must be in compliance with the housing element, annual progress reports, and must have built an affordable housing project within program-eligible years. And I'm pleased to report that Galt qualifies for the program or the grant because we are up-to-date on our housing element and our progress reports, and Galt Place, uh, an affordable housing project, was built during, uh, program-eligible years. The grant amounts are based on the type of housing project and a number of different bonus awards. The grant funds can be used for a number of different, uh, park improvements. They are shown on page two of your staff report. We are required to identify a park site in which to use the funds, and staff in the report has identified two sites with three different options. Uh, one site is Harvey Park with two different options. One option is to rehab the existing park, and the other option is to provide some new amenities. Uh, the second option, or the third option, I should say, is the sports complex, uh, and the, uh, park improvement would just be rehabbing, uh, existing facilities. The total estimated grant, if we're eligible for what we believe in bonus awards, is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred dollars, and the estimated grant for the sports complex is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. The reason Harvey Park is eligible, or may be eligible, for a slightly larger grant is that it is eligible, or potentially eligible, for the bonus award of the Parks Sporting and Infill Project, which in this case is Galt Place. And I say may be and estimated because, uh, HCD is the final ruler on the bonus awards. The grant application is due on January twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, and it requires a resolution from the city council authorizing staff to submit the application, and then also authorizing us to execute the, uh, standard contract. So we're asking you tonight to approve the resolution authorizing us to submit the application, and then also giving us the authorization to, uh, execute the documents required to secure the HRP program grant. In addition, we're also seeking direction from council on selecting a park site for the grant funds. And that concludes that presentation. We're available to answer questions you might have.
Okay, we have someone in the audience, so let's show our good manners and have him come up first, uh, Mr. Richard Dorman. Dor?
Mayor Powers, uh, members of the Galt City Council, my name is Richard Dorman, and I'm the president of Galt Youth Baseball. Uh, I'd like to address the city council on the housing-related grant program. I understand it's still in the application process, and the application is due by the date that's already been mentioned, uh, and that the council's gonna be asked to provide direction on where those funds will go. Uh, each year, Galt Youth Baseball and the City of Galt Parks and Recreation work together to prepare the fields for play. We understand that in recent years, funding from the city has not always been available as times have been hard for everyone. Galt Parks and Recreation works very hard to do what they can. The remaining funds for getting the fields ready comes from existing Galt Youth Baseball funds, and more often than not, from the pockets of our coaches and family members. Uh, each year, the fields are prepared and ready for the kids to play baseball. However, Galt Youth Baseball does not have the funds to fix and maintain all that needs to be done at Harvey Field. Galt Youth Baseball would respectfully ask the city council to provide direction to use the grant funds for Harvey Park. Uh, option one of the agenda, uh, report allows for new fences, bleachers, field improvements, irrigation, restroom rehabilitation, and perhaps replacement, uh, and other suggested improvements by the city and Galt Youth Baseball. Uh, one such improvement, uh, that we would like to see is a, a play area for local families that live in the area around the park. Uh, option two would still allow the city to receive the funds, but would leave the city responsible for the remaining funds, uh, out of an estimated five hundred and forty thousand dollars to expand the park. Uh, this option would expand the park, but would not address the current conditions and maintenance needs of the park. This is all according to the agenda report submitted to the council on the housing-related grant program. Uh, Galt Youth Baseball wishes to improve our program and offer to hold tournaments in the City of Galt. This would contribute to our community. In the past, we have held an all-star pre-state tournament. Uh, the current conditions of the fields at Harvey Park have prevented us from trying this again. Uh, we'll need the assistance of the city in order to do this, and rehabilitating Harvey Park would allow this to happen. By selecting option two for Harvey Park, the city would not be addressing the conditions and maintenance needs of the park, uh, which would make having tournaments a difficult, if not impossible, task. And I thank you for the time that you've given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, uh, sway.
Okay, go ahead. We'll go right down the line, okay?
Um, you know, I don't know if we were talking, uh, mentally or not, but I have very strong feelings, uh, in agreement with what you're saying for Harvey Park. Uh, part of it is for different reasons. As you know, we've had some issues, some, um, serious issues in that area, uh, most recently, the shooting of a seventeen-year-old teenager. Uh, so my thoughts are, if we make the park more family-friendly and, uh, get additional lighting to make it safer, that, uh, we can make that park, uh, more attractive, uh, safer, and I plan, we're, we're going to be having a strategic plan meeting, uh, for the next six months, and I want to focus on that area. And to rehabilitate Harvey Park would go a long way to accomplishing what I'm hoping will make the whole area safer, as well as provide some, uh, family-friendly equipment. And, um, we have just built the golf place across the street. Some of the seniors over there would like to have a place to go and feel safe, living in apartments. You know, they can't plant flowers or get out, and so, uh, they would benefit also from what, from what we're trying to do with Harvey Park. Um, my suggestion is that I think it's a different alternative, but I'm hoping it will accomplish what you want and what I'm hoping to accomplish, and that we, the most expensive part of putting in the, um, the tot lot on that vacant lot would be to grade it and do the infrastructure, which would take money away from other things that we wanna do. But I'm thinking we could take that area where Vice Mayor, um, maybe, had, uh, proposed earlier to put in a dog park, uh, and if we put in the, uh, play equipment in that area, it would take a lot less money because it's already graded, and then we could use the other part of the grant to upgrade the facilities and make it more presentable when teams come to play in golf. So, um, it's a little bit of a different alternative. I hope that it, um, agrees with what you're trying to do, and I hope the council will, um, see the benefit of this alternative.
Okay, anyone else?
I, I generally agree. Um, I don't, I, I don't believe that, um, that the grant funds for the rehabilitation that, uh, Mr. Dorman was speaking of necessarily need to be tied to, uh, a tot lot like you're talking about or other improvements. I think that would come through the budget process, uh, because I'm assuming we plan on using up to the total amount for the rehabilitation, uh, you know, given the, the age and condition out there, I suspect that they could pretty easily spend most of that money.
I'm sure.
So I, I, I agree to that extent, but I don't believe it's basically tied together. I think that that should be a separate process that, you know, through the budget or through this strategic planning, that, uh, we provide additional direction to staff to take a look at where to cite it. I don't know that where we were originally talking, because, as I recall, that was out near A Street. I don't know that A Street would be the best location. Um, no, excuse me, C Street.
Yeah, C Street.
I think they were talking that the corner of, uh, would have been Second and, uh, Second and A.
You're talking about the dog park?
The dog park.
It's right across from where Harvey is, right?
Yeah, I, so I don't know that that's the, the best location, so I think it would give us some time to actually look at, maybe get some input from the parents, but I think more importantly, I know we're kinda rushed on this because we have a deadline on the twenty-second, but we don't have is any input from the, from the Recreation Commission, which I think is very important, which, so I think, again, to get the grants for the rehabilitation, I think is great. I think any other improvements should go through the Recreation Commission, get recommendations from them as well as the parents, but, uh...
And actually, the areas that I'm talking, I'm not sure that we are on the same page. It would be, uh, more on the corner of, uh, C Street and, what is it?
Third.
Third?
Second.
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 Right now, there's a lot of, of, um, oak trees, which are beautiful, but it also makes it very dark at night, and I think that's a safety issue, so if we could, in our plan, add additional lighting, and, again, some areas for the, the kids to play while their older siblings are, uh, having the baseball games there, I think that would make it a really nice park.
And I agree with that. I, I just think that as a parent, you know, you, you know, one kid's playing ball and the other one's playing in a, in a playground, you wanna have, you know, a visual security over, over the one that's not in the active game. And, you know, being that distance from where the bleachers are, I don't know if that's the best location, that was my only point, so. But I think there's a process by which we can determine what the best location is.
Yeah. Again, one of my main issues was, uh, improving the safety in the area.
True.
Um, and, um, I handed this article to Reed, and it's just really short, so with your permission, I'll read this little short paragraph. Uh, and this is sort of, um, targeted at my idea of trying to make that whole area safety, safer. It is a historical area of golf. I think it's one that we should, um, recover. We don't want it to become a blighted area. Um, this is from the V. Over the years, McClatchy Park has developed a reputation for being unsafe, with drug dealers frequenting the site. However, the images of the park began changing in twenty-twelve, when the Farmers' March was added and volunteers put in, uh, frisbee golf courts. So that was my idea of trying to make the park more family-friendly to help also combat, um, the serious issues of the area.
Councilmember Cruz?
I agree with both of my colleagues here, with one small caveat. Actually, it's a large caveat. If we're gonna spend this money, we're gonna put the money in there, let's not waste it. And when I say waste it, we need to get code enforcement involved, we need to get our, uh, law enforcement out there, we need to clean up that area to the south. You, you say it's starting to get blighted, it's there. It's blighted. We need the slum lords held accountable for what they're doing out there.
And I think that's something that we could do in our strategic plan. I've already met with the, um, the police department. In fact, we're planning a walk party at Harvey Park to start the, the ball rolling, but it will be a whole campaign, but tonight, we're just looking at the issue of selecting the park.
I think we're all on the same page on this one as far as which park, but we do need, we have a lot of cleanup to do to make sure that whatever we spend out there isn't wasted.
Exactly.
Um, just my, a real quick question. I know we're not doing the tot lot right now, but it's on property where Harvey Park is, right there on the corner, right by the, to you.
Okay. Originally, in the park master plan, we purchased, uh, the lot, and that was for a, a tot lot. But what I'm suggesting at this time, because we have limited money, is instead of trying to create that bigger, um, tot lot, uh, put in lighting for safety, add some equipment for the, for the younger kids to play on, in the area that's already the park. Does that?
Yeah, but, 'cause I, what I was going to say, having frequented that park at many games, um, where you're talking about, along that line, actually, just for point of reference, uh, that's where a lot of the families are anyway, with their pop-ups and all that, so it really isn't far away.
Right.
Because a lot of times, that's where they're all at, you know, 'cause they're hanging out, so I just wanted to mention that. Um, where do we go from here? Councilmember Singleton, did you have a thought?
Ms. Finn, you're finishing your comment.
Oh, uh, I was gonna say, this, this is my concept, uh, for the reasons I mentioned, and I think it's pretty much in agreement with what, uh, he was proposing. I, I don't have any objection to selecting the park tonight and maybe, uh, presenting it at the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, which is coming up this week. It's not too late to get it on the agenda, if, if you feel like it's important that they can be a part of it.
I think it's kind of a moot point. It's, once council makes a decision tonight, that's the decision. Um, it's unfortunate that we were, you know, brought in earlier, but I understand that, you know, we have deadlines and staff's busy. Um, I'm just thinking on the, the, in the totality of what we're talking about, the additional tot lot, and what others, what other specific improvements are gonna be done. I think it'd be good to get into it from there.
Well, I don't think it's done enough, if we're just choosing the park factor. We'll deal with it afterwards.
The only thing you're doing tonight is selecting the park.
So they still can get a simple.
Armando, um, do you have anything that, do you have any thoughts on either park or can we put you on the spot, or?
It benefits the city either way, whichever park we go. It just depends on which kids you wanna, um, which park you wanna benefit to help the kids. Um, it's, Harvey Park's a great location, sports complex is a great location, they're used by our youth. Um, I support you to park. Uh, but I do want you to know that we did have talks about the, the Parks and Recreation Commission. It was too late to get them onto an agenda. We do have a meeting tomorrow, and we needed to basically pick a park at this meeting, uh, but if you guys would like us to, we'd love to take it back to the Parks and Recreation to have, have their input on it, if you choose to.
Um, and just one other quick question, um...
And just one other quick question. How much money, funding are you thinking you'll get for Harvey Park? We've got $159,000 for the sports complex, but...
I had a figure for...
$159,000, is it? $159,800 was what they said, okay? We've got $169,400, but the dollar amount was with a little wiggle. And so how much would it, do you think we'd get for Harvey Park, and would there be enough money in there to include a structure for the children to play on?
The figure I had in the staff report would be the amount, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what we decide to put there, it's the, the amount of the grant is based on, you know, location of the park and then the project, the affordable housing project, so the amenities in the park wouldn't matter. So that figure of $169,400 is still the estimated grant, and I don't think that gets us everything we were looking for on the park.
I can make a suggestion. Sounds like everybody's interested in Harvey Park. Council can make that determination tonight, and then what we can do is work up some better, some cost estimates of what a tot lot would cost, with the fencing, bleachers, the restrooms, take that information, talk to Golf Youth Baseball, talk to the Parks and Rec Commission, and then have them make some recommendations. We can come back to the council for you guys to make a final decision on actually what the money is spent on, because it's going to take at least six months before we even know about the grant. So we've got plenty of time to work with the organizations, figure out how and where we want to spend the money in, at the park. We'll come back with some more, some more details, probably through the budget process.
And I could support that. At this point, if that's the direction, I have enough information to kind of complete the application and go with those improvements. What we end up selecting, as long as it's consistent with the application requirements of park improvements, we'd be okay.
And Councilmember Vice Mayor Singleton, I know you wanted to...
Well, I was just letting everybody speak their piece, and that's fine. Look, I do understand the sports complex needs some things. The concession stand, I think they need a new roof over there at the sports complex, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Solis?
The improvements there would be more of the restrooms where that's a huge need at any facility.
Okay.
The concession stand was one, and shade structures for people watching games was another.
Okay.
Those were the three that were identified for that area.
But my perspective of this is, Golf is trying to improve our downtown, Fourth Street. You know, we've got the golf place over there and, you know, Roosters. We have an agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad, we're going to hopefully beautify that, and I think us making improvements on this Harvey Park is only going to enhance what we are planning to do with that area of town. So I think our money is better spent on trying to improve a park. Do we, how long has it been since we've made improvements at that park? Been a while. Huh?
Yeah, it's been a while. I think they're right, that Golf Youth Baseball's put a lot of time and effort and money into maintaining and keeping the park up as best they can.
Right. Now, I, I've seen some of the coaches and parents out there throwing dirt on that field, I think every year, if I'm not mistaken, before the games start. Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Yeah, it's somewhat of a tradition. I've coached in Golf Youth Baseball, I had maybe ten years, eleven years ago, and that's what the coaches did. They'd go out, hoe the weeds, take care of the fields. The primary user of Harvey Park is Golf Youth Baseball. They've maintained it, they've done upgrades to the facilities, they added hot water to the restrooms, they've maintained the snack bar in the area, they pay for the concession stand health permit fees. So it's pretty much their home is where they play their games, and they're the maintainent of that park.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Solis. I, I just think we need to, if we don't do some improvements, it's going to continue to go downhill, and I think we need to do it at Harvey Park, so that will be my, my recommendation.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion now.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded to use the money for Harvey Park. Do you want to read the recommended action, please?
Number one, approve the resolution. Adopt the resolution, authorize staff to submit an HRP program application to the California State Department of Housing and Communities Development for an HRP program grant, and if the application is approved, authorize staff to execute a State of California standard agreement and any and all other documents required or deemed necessary or appropriate to secure the HRP program grant. And number two, provide direction to staff on selecting a park for the grant funds.
Chairman of the Mayor, I think what the... I think what the motion is, it would be to approve the resolution and then to select Harvey Park as suggested by the Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Singleton, you wanted to say something?
Yes. I want to urge the parents, and I see some of them in the audience over there because they're smiling, please come out to the Parks and Rec Commission meetings and make your thoughts known and what your suggestions would be, so that we can also get those thoughts come across our desk, okay?
Very good.
Thanks.
If I could say one final comment, just want to thank Chris for bringing this to our attention. He was the one that kind of found the grant and brought it forward, and he did all the work, paperwork and everything else, so it's really thanks to him for...
That's something to say there.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
That's a good buck. Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, moving on to Police Department. Resolution approving the 2014 annual update to the City of Golf Emergency Operations Plan.
Good evening again. Before you, there's a resolution to approve the 2014 annual update for the Golf Emergency Plan. In September of 1950, the City Council was given the responsibility to maintain the Emergency Operations Plan for the City of Golf. Since its inception, the Emergency Operations Plan has been reviewed and updated on an annual basis to include the most current emergency philosophies. During our annual review, we found no need to make any updates, except that during our biannual's strategy planning session with the council on July 11th, it was recommended by council and also staff that we incorporate a shelter component to that plan. Before you tonight is the 2014 update, which includes the shelter component, which we actually used three weeks ago during our severe weather that we experienced when we opened up the shelters. With us tonight is Sergeant Craig Walton, and he's here to answer any questions regarding our addition as far as the severe weather component or the shelter component that was asked for, and should you have any questions, I'm available.
We don't bite, come on up. Well, watch out for them.
He knows better, I do bite.
What's that?
Said, you know better, I do bite.
What we do is every year, we're required by a resolution to update the Emergency Operations Plan. The plan itself is solid. The only changes that were required this year, either by law or by necessity, was to add what we call the severe weather plan or the warming and cooling center plan. Basically, the plan gives us a very good direction of what we look for to either open a warming or cooling center. It gives us a matrix of understanding of what the human body requires to regenerate itself and stay safe. I'll give you the example, everyone to ask me how this works. It basically says that if the temperature in the summertime reaches 105 degrees or more for three days and does not cool below 75 degrees at night, the body can't regenerate itself and cool off, and it begins to cause health problems for people who do not have air conditioning, swamp heating, or some other type of cooling mechanism. They begin to dehydrate and the vital organs begin to shut down. Consequently, on the other side, and this is always a problem for everyone, is the warming center. The plan is set up that if the temperature drops below 32 degrees for three consecutive nights, sustained for four hours, and the temperature outside, the ambient temperature does not raise above 50 degrees during the day, then we're required to do something to help warm people who are, don't have the facility or the wherewithal to do that. But the problem is, that's not an absolute. So the, that portion of it is more of a guideline, so if you look at it real closely, you find out these are the guidelines for the cooling, or the warming, excuse me. Because when you start factoring in wind chill factor, which is 3.575 times the temperature divided by some other formula, that comes up with some magic number, how it affects your body with, with the cold temperature, it requires that we do something to help people who don't have facilities to take care of themselves. So the guideline is there. What we did is we put it all together. This complies with FEMA standard and California Department of Office of Emergency Services, is to be called, and that's why I had a little... So what we did is we reduced it down to writing, so we would at least have a guideline in the event that we needed to use it again in the future. So what you're looking at, if you have any questions, let me know, but it is a very comprehensive plan. We did not reinvent the wheel on this. We took what we needed for the City of Golf out of several other plans, and we've run it by about everybody in the world, including TSP Fire, they've looked at it, Chief McLeeny thought it would look good, which is pretty, a pretty good gauge for how it looks and operates. Questions?
No, and I know that was it last year or the year before, we really amped it up, so this is just adding the other few components that need to be added. Barbara?
I just wanted to comment that I was really pleased with your plan to communicate this whole plan to the senior communities. That was something that was a concern of mine a few years ago when we had a wholesale. So I'm glad that you included that in the plan, the way to get that information out to senior housing and seniors. Thank you.
You're welcome. It actually worked really well, and for those who aren't aware, is we use the reverse 911 system to start with. We also use television, radio. We jumped on with County Office of Emergency Service along with State Office of Emergency Services to build messages and start getting it out there along with the local newspaper. So I think we pretty well covered everyone who needed to, and the big question always is, is what about the homeless? They're better connected than anybody else, we found out. They all have cell phones, tablets, computers, and most of them told me they don't want to go out, it's cold, it's warmer to stay at home, so. Anything I can, any questions I can answer for you?
Okay, can I have the recommended action, please? Thank you very much, Sergeant Walton.
Adopt the resolution approving the 2014 annual update to the City of Golf Emergency Operations Plan. Does that have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now we have Communication City Clerk's reporting. Just a couple reminders. On January 8th, tomorrow, there's a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. On Thursday, January 9th, there's a Planning Commission meeting at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. On January 16th, a Beautification Committee meeting at 3:30 in the City Hall Community Room. That takes us to our next city council meeting. Just wanted to remind everybody, February 1st, the Golf Winter Bird Festival. Check our website, sign up for the tours while there's some still available. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Staff?
Just another scheduling reminder, this Thursday, the 9th, is our strategic planning meeting at Roosters at 8:30, 8:30 AM.
That came somehow.
And the mayor's like, "Thanks for reminding me."
Yeah, thank you. Okay, no one else? Okay, council, ladies first.
I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to 2014, because it'll be a good year. Vice Mayor.
Oh, I wasn't expecting that. Well, I hope everybody had a good holiday. I certainly did. It was nice and quiet at my house, and I'm looking forward to serving the community better than I did this last year.
Councilmember Cruz.
Chris, I'm going to throw you under the bus on this one, but with council's permission, I would like to have us revisit and review the big box ordinance at the next council meeting.
Okay, so, okay, Jason, that's like, you know, who does that on The Voice, you know?
So, one of the things we're looking at, the council's actually already approved, we have money in the budget for, is to take a look at our zoning ordinance and one, and the big box ordinance is on the list of things we want to look at, so we're in the process, actually, one of the last things that Sandy is doing before, even though she's gone, kind of finishing something up, which is developing a scope work for RFP to go out and do one of the items, which is the big box ordinance, and so hopefully, we'll get that out in the next couple of months, and we'll be off to the races. Anything to add on that, Chris?
No, I think there's been interest from staff to, to do something with the other ordinance, so we, we'd like to address it as well. Thank you, sir.
Is the timeline's okay with you? You know they're working on it, okay?
As long as we get it moving, I'm good.
Okay. Anything else?
So you still want to bring it back, or no?
Well, it sounds like they've already got it rolling.
That's what Chris was saying he's going to make, okay.
We're not going to bring it back. That's what we let the council want us to do, we're already working on it.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we'd like to know what you're doing. Okay, Councilmember Cruz, how about, are you done?
I'm finished. That was a big one for me.
Okay. Councilmember Campion?
I have nothing.
How different, Happy New Year?
Happy New Year.
Okay. Happy New Year to everybody, and 2014 is going to be a great year for the City of Golf, and rock on.